All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 3:30 PM. Roll call.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Ushaylu. Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Metoyer and seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ushaylu. Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Community input on closed session items. No comments? Okay. All right, we will now move to closed session. The items are 5A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation; 5B, conference with labor negotiator; 5C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation; 5D, public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment; 5E and 5F, public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment; number 202204HR and 202205HR and 5G, student discipline one case. We will return to open session at 6:00 PM. We move to closed session at 3:31 PM. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Opening ceremonies as led by trustee Anderson. It's been a while.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have three readouts from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to affirm the findings as presented and declined to reopen the record to hear from all parties. The roll call vote was as follows: seven ayes, zero noes for public employee dismissal, discipline, release, employment pursuant to government code, section 54957. Additionally, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the employment agreement number 202204HR. Roll call vote was as follows: six ayes, one absent. And finally, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the Third Amendment to Agreement for Employment number 202205HR. Roll call vote was as follows: five ayes, one noes, one absent. So we move to adoption of the minutes from 6:21:22 and 6:27:22. May I have a motion? So moved. You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Crane and seconded by trustee Yelsey. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ushaylu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
All right, we move to introduction of new staff. Jeff Trader, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Business Officer; and Sekoro Shields, Assistant Superintendent, Achievement, Innovation and Continuous Movement.
Yeah, really excited tonight to introduce two amazing teammates to our board and our community. Jeff Trader started in 1997 in Newport Mesa Unified as a financial manager, moved up to director, then admin director, executive director, and finally, chief business official. When I was at the state level and was blessed with the call that I was offered this position, I asked my colleagues in the School Business Official Association, "Hey, do you know Jeff Trader?" And they said, "Oh, he's amazing." No, he is known statewide. This is a guy you can trust. You're lucky to have him, right? Unsolicited, that was their opinion of him. Since I've been here, I've seen him be communicative, try to explain things in a way that provide access to all of our community members. To make a community-funded district budget comprehensible to all constituents is no easy task. And Jeff continues to look at ways to do that. And then his overall humanity, I think, is something that people appreciate about him. I wasn't going to mention the gold LeMay jacket, but that too, if you're at one of our events. It's just worth noting. And then Sekoro Shields, also someone that comes with a ton of experience, having worked at the County Office of Education, helping districts turn around and improve achievement as assistant superintendent, doing that same work as a superintendent in two different districts in the state of California. And then at the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence, a statewide entity. At the time, served by Carl Kona as executive director, he tapped her on the shoulder to come to the state and help him turn around underperforming districts, to find someone with that level of experience doing the work that we're committed to. As we heard at the last board meeting, we've got work to do. And I'm excited that she's here to help us do that work. So, welcome to Jeff and to Sekoro. Maybe we could have Sekoro say a couple of words. She's got, I don't know if laryngitis or lost her voice, but she's so committed to being here and being with us, she's going to cough through her hello. And then Jeff, we'll have you follow up, please.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for, pardon my voice, I'm very sorry. I apologize. I'm so excited to be part of this team to, in the short time that I've been here, I have been met with such generosity of spirit, the team. And that's really everybody I've met has shown dedication, kindness, commitment, a true spirit of wanting to do what's best for the Coast Mesa Newport community. And I'm very excited to be part of this. I know I have a lot to learn coming from up north and I look forward to it. And I'm proud to be part of this team and serve this community, these communities. Thank you.
And likewise, you know, when I was in high school, I had to write these papers. And I remember writing this one paper and I thought, "Oh, this is such drudgery." And I wrote, you know, I had to have like 500 words. And so it was, you know, the bird flew and flew and flew, that kind of thing. And I remember getting that paper back and Mrs. Green, right, she takes me aside. She said, "You know, I think you were trying to get to the number of words, right?" I said, "Yeah, and I did a good job, right?" And she said, "Well, you got to the number of words, but there's a little more to it. And next time, could you write something maybe that would really, you know, thrill me?" You know? And it was a challenge. And in doing that, I happened to find out that she was kind of a cheese connoisseur. So every paper of mine was, had cheese in it after that somehow. And it was a great, anyways, I learned that I had a talent there. And there's a lot of Mr. and Mrs. Greens in our district who work a lot of magic with students and change their lives. And they require a serious backup team, you know, maintenance operations, facilities, accounting, all of that. And I'm really thrilled to be a part of that so that the teachers in this district can do their magic. And I'm really pleased tonight to have my son with me. Ryan is in the back there. I'm so glad he came to represent.
Brian, wave your hand right now.
Excuse me, but does that mean we're going to now look at our budget books and look for cheese?
Yes, I can put it in there. Cheezy.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. We're moving to Harbor Council PTA report. Julie Link.
It's there? It's all changed. I just noticed that I was supposed to be sitting back there. Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Smith, President Barto, Board and Cabinet members and guests. My name is Julie Link and this year I am Harbor Council Auditor. Harbor Council PTA looks forward to continued partnerships with the district, school board, principals, and unit PTA leaders. We have no doubt our schools and students will be recharged and ready for an engaging new year. At the council level, we are working behind the scenes to develop an excellent agenda. Here are a few of our goals. One, provide many training sessions throughout the year to develop our PTA leaders. And two, reboot our unit leaders mentoring program. Number three, which is new, implement zone-specific networking opportunities. I think to bring that back. Four, explore opportunities to host a council service project for our community. And that's a new one and we're developing it right now to pick a community that needs help and all work together to collaborate to improve our community. Okay, lastly, I'd like to share a couple of stats as we just finished our fiscal year on June 30th. Our council reported 152,945 hours from 28 units. The estimated national value of each volunteer hour is currently $29.95. In monetary terms, our volunteering impact equates to $4,588,702.75. Our membership total was 5,503 and this is an increase of 1,335 members from last year. As of July 1st, our PTAs are accepting memberships. We invite all of you to support your units of choice to help us continue our advocacy efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have CSE and NMFT president's comments, but I think we're on summer break for that one. So that's fine. We'll move to number 14, community input on non-agendized items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Okay, first we move to Mary Haas.
So, I'm so glad to be here. I have not been speaking in front of these wonderful people before. So I just wanted to express myself as a mother, a citizen of US, a legal citizen of US, I should say. I have achieved everything that I came to this country by legality, hard work, raise a child. I'm a mother and I do care about how people treat each other and treat children. When I went in to get my federal building, the officer took me in. I had to learn 100 questions that I had to answer. But I had to learn the Constitution. I had to learn about the flag, that all of you stood up and paid respect. And I'm hoping that truly you know what it means. Because I think for most of the people that are born here, they don't understand. And I see that here all the time. They don't understand their Constitution. They don't understand the meaning, the power of the flag of the United States. They don't really know about the United States. So they are just getting information from an upper level tell them to do this in order to hold their position, their post, their salary, $204,000 a year, to make a living and they bow to all of you. Yes, thank you for having me. Thank you so much. I'm so glad to be part of this. But they really may not know what Constitution stands for. So I, as a new American citizen, had to go through this. I had to learn this. I had to, and then at the end, they had me stand up and say, "If I have to carry arm to protect Constitution and flag of America, I have to do that." And I turned around to my American friends and clients and said, "Did you guys know that?" They go, "No, we don't know most of our Constitution." I'm like, so I'm seeing here that all of you beautiful souls are doing your job. You're doing your job, but are you really following the Constitution? Are you really knowing your Constitution? Do you really know when you're enforcing something to our children? Is it something you were told to enforce because it was a mandate, which is not law? Was it guideline, which is not law? Do you really know your laws? And I beg of you to sit and read every single Constitution. I work clear of it. And I know every single one of you love your work, love it.
Thank you.
Address our children by your following.
Sorry, that's our three minutes.
That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have Haley Jenkins, then Bill Dunlap, and then Jamael Diab.
Hello, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and members of the board. My name is Haley Jenkins. Thank you for having me up here. At the last two meetings, I have come here to discuss the creation of a library book review committee. And I was told you all discussed this behind closed doors, which didn't make sense to me because if the community you serve is worried about inappropriate books at their kid's school, I feel like that you would want to do all that you could to publicly show that you valued these parents' concerns and the seriousness of the matter at Wilson and to quickly act on this by creating a committee. Instead, nothing has been said out loud to the public. When speaking with President Barto after your last meeting, she told me a committee has already been in the works with teachers and some PTA and that you all really did want to include parents and community members. So do you? Why are you dragging your feet on this? I was told if I was interested in trying to get on the committee, I needed to email my local principals, and I did. I urged President Barto to get the word out to the public so others would know this was being created and could also join. But nothing has yet been done on your part. You had a man working on one of your campuses providing little kids with pornographic books. There were nine copies alone of the book Flamer. Have you all looked at this book? It literally has a page with pictures of a boy holding a bottle that says, and excuse me for this, "We're each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. Ha, ha, ha." Nine copies at the elementary school. And he, according to your website, was allowed to resign for personal reasons and so now he can go somewhere else and do this. Instead of being open and honest with the public for fear of saying librarian Grant Thompson's name, you are trying to be as quiet as you can about it and sweep it under the rug. When does protecting someone that is essentially grooming children take precedence over protecting innocent children? I know it's embarrassing for the district, but do something to ensure this doesn't happen again. A book review committee with teachers, parents, and community members should have been formed the minute this came onto your radar. I'm told it may not be formed until around the beginning of the school year, but nobody was certain. When the kids already come back in school, is that when you're going to do this? When they can already have access to the books again? We know many other books like this exist at other schools, so get moving on this, please. It's too important not to prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Bill Dunlap.
Good evening, trustees, President Barto, Superintendent Smith. I have three minutes. I have three items. I'll try to do them one minute each. My concern goes along with Haley's. We put in a request, a formal request that is required by the school board in your district rules to have an ad hoc community committee put together to review these books. We submitted that to board meetings ago and we've yet to hear anything officially from the board. So, you know, you got to tell us something. You can't just go silent. You got, if you're not going to do it, then tell us officially. We don't want to have to put in a public records request for requesting an agenda item. I mean, come on, let's respond, you guys. You're getting paid. We elected you. You owe us a response to that. Regarding the Wilson situation, I'm going to read you something that's 18 years old that I received from Jamie Costellanos, who was the Assistant Superintendent. Welcome aboard, new assistant superintendent. It was written to me on March 2004. Both Mr. Vossen and Mr. Kennard have met with the English department to review your concerns, most specifically with the use of the two books here mentioned. Needless to say, you raised valid concerns in that these books were not approved on the supplementary list and one of them was not at the right grade level. And we thank you for raising these issues. Have you sent anything to the parents apologizing for the Flamer books? Has anybody sent a letter like I have 14 years ago? No, no one sent anything. You sent the Assistant Superintendent over there. He met with them. No formal apology, no nothing. That's shameful. You guys are responsible for those books that got there. You found them. We got them out of there, but sent an apology to those parents. They're still feeling the effects of that. Third graders looked at pornographic material and no one has sent an apology to those parents. You got that, you guys? Somebody should do it. Maybe it should be Ashley because that's your district. Have you met with any of those parents personally? And did you send a formal apology so we know on record that you've stepped up to do that? It might be worthwhile. All right, my last situation that I like to talk about is regarding the new superintendent. Again, welcome aboard. We have seven superintendents, assistant superintendents, averaging salary $240,000 to $260,000. We have approximately 18,000 students in this district. And so if you compare that against Irvine, who has twice that, they have 36,000 students. They have four assistant superintendents and they have lots of directors, but they're paid a lot less. We have the highest staff salary for our district. So you might think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jamael Diab.
First, good evening. My name is Jamal Diab. I was born in Damascus, Syria in 1957. I just want to make one point, which is the future of this country. And the future of this country is the future of our kids. If we know what we teach them and to bring them right, then the future of this country will be safe. I just want to tell you a story. When I came to this country 50 years ago, I went to get my visa at the American Embassy in Damascus. And the counselor says, "I want your dad to sign for financial documents because when you come over here, you have to spend money and I want to know who's going to support you." I said, "No problem." I called my dad. My dad came to the consulate. They gave him a document. He signed everything. Everything is set. The counselor was trying to finish up the documents for me and my visa papers so I can install my passport. And my dad said to him, "You know what? My son has scholarship to go to USSR, Soviet Union back then. But I don't want to let him go over there, even though it's free. He doesn't have to spend a dime." And the counselor threw the pen out of his hand. He said, "Why? This is crazy. You want to send your son to the United States to study and spend money on him and you don't want to send him to the Soviet Union over there and study for free?" And my dad says, "Yeah." You know why? Because when we send our kids to the Soviet Union, if their brain voltage is 220, they come back 110. If we send them to the United States, 110, they come back 220. And the counselor, he flipped laughing. He fell off the chair. He said, "Jamal, give me your passport. You're going to the United States." And he gave me that visa. He looked at my dad and said, "You guys are Americans, even though you don't have passports, but you're American because we have that freedom. We understood what the freedom is. And I want the same thing for our kids to grow in here, having the same thing, not to lose that." I watched Syria to go from a free country into a country that became socialist and communist. They took our property away, my grandfather's property, my dad's property, and we became with nothing. When I came to this country, I saw the freedom over here and I knew I was born like this and I cared about that. So please, keep in mind, what we teach our kids is going to affect the future of our country. Thank you very much. You have blessed America.
Thank you. Next we have Alicia B. and then Grace Hobbs.
Good evening, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, and board members. For decades, people have shared that they support comprehensive sexuality education. Unfortunately, these are often the opinions of those who have done the least amount of research on them. Aside from some of the current content being pornographic and grooming, comprehensive sexuality education is also now woke. As in critical race theory, Kimberle Crenshaw, Angela Davis, social justice, pedagogy, intersectionality, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and a language lens woke. In a recent conference hosted by the Sex Education Collaborative, keynote from AMaze presented on comprehensive means intersectional, moving sex education forward. During this presentation, the speaker stresses that sex education must be taught within the larger context of intersectionality. Intersectionality as in the key critical race theory concept. The speaker also shows the wheel of power and privilege. I bring this to your attention because the Sex Education Collaborative's core values include comprehensive, high-quality sex education that is grounded in equity and social justice. The collaborative is committed to challenging and dismantling systems of oppression by promoting equity and inclusion within sex education. The collaborative's member consists of none other than Health Connected. Does this sound familiar? It's the curriculum that you've adopted as your sex education that our children are currently exposed to at the secondary level. So when the Newport Mesa Unified School District teachers created an open letter claiming that they are not teaching critical race theory and they publish media that claiming that they're not teaching CRT, they indeed are. And are you aware that the videos from AMaze are shown to your secondary students? This started at Ensign, by the way. This organization normalizes sexual behavior and pornography with medically inaccurate information under the pretense of age-appropriate. Creating mature content in cartoon form does not make something age-appropriate. And they promote intersectionality. So imagine that, more evidence of CRT within your district. Rather than blindly trusting the superintendent's and assistant superintendent's recommendations, I urge you, the board, to do your own investigation into the curriculum that you adopt. I suspect that you would be ashamed to know that your own children are exposed to this indoctrination and grooming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Grace Hobbs.
Good evening, everyone. I had a busy day, so I'm not super prepared, but I just wanted to share some information with you guys on our sex ed that we teach to our 12- and 13-year-olds that go into CDM from our cute little elementary schools. My daughter came from East Bluff, went to CDM this year after I learned that we teach our seventh graders some pretty disgusting stuff I'm going to share with you guys. And I was rather shocked and once I shared it with some friends, they immediately contacted Dr. Gogol at CDM. And for some reason, sex ed disappeared this year and I'd like to know why because nobody seems to have the answer to that. But I'm going to share some stuff with the room and see what everybody thinks about this. One of the activities that they're using to teach the kids, I believe they use this at Ensign because they did not do this at CDM, not this past year, but they, or the year before, actually, because it was completely canceled this past year. But they're practicing activities like ask for two volunteers from class to blow up a condom and compare what the best type of lubrication to use with condoms is. They also want to make sure that the oil will wear down the latex to let them know that... that the oil will wear down the latex. They want to compare blowing up a condom with blowing up a balloon. I'm not sure what that does. They go over oral sex. They're teaching our 12- and 13-year-olds about anal sex, lubing their bottoms, STDs, sexual touching, pregnancies. They're also teaching them that they can get pregnant by having anal sex. I'm not sure how that works, but we can, I guess, touch on that another time. They also go through several different ways to identify that my husband and I had never heard of. We literally had to Google it and then erase it off our histories on our phones so the children wouldn't see it. Dozens of them. So I can go through some of them. Gender fluid, transgender, most of us are familiar with, non-binary, we had no idea what that meant, non-binary umbrella, had no idea what that was. So we could just go on and on and on. I believe there's 21 of them here. That's something the kids are being taught in class. So then we go on to something by, called SOGI. And there's a little test the children have to take. I think I only have 26 seconds left, but there's a question that says, it is obvious someone is gay by the way they dress, question mark. Is that a yes or a no question? True or false? A boy who doesn't want to have sex with a girl is probably gay, true or false? What kind of questions are these we're asking the children? This is ridiculous. Nearly one in five LGBTQ plus students have had to change schools because they felt unsafe or uncomfortable? Is that true or false?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we move to the superintendent's comments.
Yep. Really appreciate the passionate stories of people coming to this country and moved by those. What I thought I heard in the comments was a commitment to civics education, certainly beyond just what we teach in every classroom, which we're committed to doing. But since I've been here in the eight months, I've heard this board commit to civics education and really prioritizing that, the civic seal and other things. And so we continue to do that work and believe we're aligned there. We've mentioned this many times. Just once again, we've convened our committee to review books per our board policy and administrative regulations, which have been shared with community members. And we will continue as well to look at processes throughout the district on how we make sure that we're doing the best we can in everything but regard to this to protect our students. And we always welcome community input in those matters. Again, we've talked about that many times. With regard to sex education, the curriculum, I wasn't here when this board adopted the curriculum that we use. I know that the state establishes that parents have a chance to come in and review it, I would imagine, but that's an assumption that you follow at all of those protocols. And if there are things that are happening in the classroom unrelated to our curriculum that we need to know about, we always welcome the community members making us aware so we can investigate those matters. We're committed to that. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Okay. And we move to community input on agendized items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on a discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board if the speaker prefers.
Okay. First, we have Alicia B. on number 17, Legislative and Budget Update.
Hello again. So the governing board has a responsibility to actively advocate fiscal and public policy that supports the district's schools and children in the community. Since contracting with Capital Advisors Group LLC in April of this past year, I have yet to see the board be proactive in defining the district's advocacy agenda as required by Board Policy 1160. Specific to legislation, Board Policy 1160 states that you shall identify issues that will affect its schools and the children in its communities, establish goals and priorities for legislative advocacy, and solicit community input and adopt legislative positions. I have had private meetings, emailed, and on June 28th, I formalized my request for an open session discussion and action in accordance with Board Policy 9322. This agenda request was amended on July 5th to include SB 866, which lowers the age of consent for vaccines to 15, SB 1479, which imposes endless COVID-19 testing plans on school districts, which is insanity, SB 1302, and EB 1940, which would require grant funds for school-based health centers to provide primary medical care, including immunization and reproductive health care. Interesting. Mental health care and more. In April, President Barto stated that it is a point well taken that some sort of community engagement meeting to discuss how school districts can work with state legislators and how the public can be involved may be worthwhile. And here we are in July and no action has occurred since that past exchange. So while I appreciate that you will be sharing an informational item, which will include updates on pertinent bills currently in the legislature, as well as budget updates that impact the district, it is disheartening to hear that you believe it's not the will of the board to take a legislative platform, given that this statement is incongruent with board policies. It has become apparent that the voices within your constituency that you have been elected to represent cannot be represented because your own individual vocal airways are impeded by the positions of more dominant control. So with four of your terms ending in November and others with years of service remaining, I ask you to examine your motives. Can the future of your service be rooted in discipleship, not only of the current community, but also of, also future generations? So the bills that prompted my request for discussion and action have detrimental consequences for our children, families, staff, and our overall community. I look forward to hearing the updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move to item 17, we have several other comments for 18B. And for 19, would you prefer to speak before the item if you had a question on 18B? Otherwise, you can speak now. I guess if you wanted to come up for 18B, Chris Gannier, oh, sorry, for consent, if you wanted to come up now, you could do so.
Sure. I am Christopher R. Gannier, architect, parent, and longtime resident here in Newport Mesa. Each of us knows someone that in the last year has left Orange County, that has left our district. School enrollment is declining. As such, it is expressly important to cut the budget in anticipation of additional loss of students and enrollment. One of the items that, you know, is coming up is the association dues for Orange County school boards. This cost for this, it's about 10 times what it costs to just be a member of the Orange County School Board Association. And so I would like to see this board reject paying dues to the California School Boards Association and save that money. I really don't see a value of joining this larger organization that doesn't seem to advocate for the values here in this community. And I view it very similar to having ESPN on your cable bill when you really hate sports or you don't like sports or you don't really care about sports. You know, maybe it's nice to have, maybe it's a nice pastime, but they're not advocating for us. They're not helping us in any way. So I see that definitely as something that you could cut. Obviously, the vast majority of the assistant superintendents probably aren't necessary and probably are overpaid. But I leave that up to the board to decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We move to, so I'm just going to remind the public that we, I'm going to remind the public that trustees may not comment on items and that we will maintain order or we will adjourn the meeting and close as we have in the past. 19B, if you'd like to come and speak now, you may. Otherwise, you can save your item until then. Okay. So with that, I'll continue with 17.
Are you still open to 19B?
Would you like to speak now?
Yes, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Joe Monday and I'm an alumni of Estancia High School, a class of 1986, a member of the award-winning Estancia Production Drama Club, Troop 1224, and part of the amazing legacy of Barbara Van Holt, one of the most influential teachers and mentors and people I've ever known in the Newport Mesa Unified School District. I'm here today to advocate for the new theater. It's a shame that the students of Estancia High School have not had the opportunity to realize, like everywhere else in the district, the promise of a new theater. I understand and sympathize that nothing is ever as easy as it looks and that decisions must be made that are thoughtful, considerate, and with due diligence. But I would contend to you that you have done that work and it's time to move forward. In Shakespeare's Henry IV, Part II, King Richard IV laments, uneasy lies the head that wears the crown. It's not easy being a leader, but lead you all must. It's time to move forward with this decision. Endless analysis paralysis only continues to kick the can down the road. Leaders, lead. I implore you to continue with the previously approved decision to build on Site Number Two. It's a perfect location and would help put a brand-new shiny face on the front of Estancia High School. I close today with one more quote from Shakespeare. This quote is from Macbeth, and although Lady Macbeth's intent is far more diabolical than mine, I use this quote today to remind you to act on behalf of the students and the community of Estancia High School. In Act One, Scene Seven of Macbeth, Lady Macbeth implores Macbeth, but screw your courage to the sticking place and we will not fail. Find your courage. Let's not fail the students and the community of Estancia. It's time to lead. End the analysis paralysis and give the students the theater they have long deserved. It is long overdue. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you. So we'll hear additional comments before each agenda item unless you would like to speak now. Did anyone else want to speak on night? You want to speak? That's fine. Go ahead.
Hello again. I'm just here again to comment on the fact that you will be approving a renewal of the Teen Book Cloud, or it says Club on that thing, by Tumbleweed Press. I understand you've already been using this online book program in the past, but do you know what you're approving? I know I've said that many times up here before. I dare each one of you to name me a book from the program. Before you all vote yes and approve a renewal, I urge you to pause and have teachers, parents, and community members, maybe a book review committee, review these first. There are hundreds of books online for this program at students' fingertips. And I know that's the point, they want to get more there than they have in the library, but there's no oversight. You've approved the ADL trainings in the past without many of you knowing exactly what was in them. Same thing to continue and approve the Diversity, Inclusion, and Racial Healing Ambassador Program. Many of you don't even know what they're teaching those kids. You are asking for another incident like Wilson when you approve this. So maybe just pause until you all know what these books are. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if you'd like to give comment on 19B now, you may, or you may wait till right before the item. That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Richard Rutledge and tonight I represent the Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure F. At our May meeting in discussion of the potential move of the Estancia Theater Project from Location Two to Location Three, which was in its infancy, we voted as consensus to come to your board with a letter which we have already pre-sent to each of you, suggesting that your fiscal prudence would be best served by keeping a very large project in the site at which it was planned for. Dr. Smith, I do not know if it's appropriate for me to read this letter in the time we have, but I would like to bring it to your attention that this board, multiple times, has approved this project. Now, based on the information for this meeting, up to $2 million has been spent as a sunk cost on Site Two. So to read just select highlights of this letter. This letter represents the consensus of the committee, whose members have spent years reviewing a significant number of the district's COC board projects. And based on this experience, as well as all the public information we have been provided over the years since the Estancia Theater Project was conceived and also approved by the trustees on the 7th and 19th, and again by this board on December 3rd, 2020, we advise you to stick with the current site. So that is the summary of this letter. If there is a way that the letter can be added to the minutes, I'd like to know that. And with the time remaining, as a member of this community and a member of the Estancia community, I think we need to all acknowledge that there was a criteria that was overlooked in this process, which Dr. Smith has acknowledged always, as with everything, can be done better, that there was a criteria for green space, trees, and student space. And as a member of industry with a lot of experience managing large projects, changing the scope of a project at the end is a disaster for budget and schedule. So I would like to ask this group if they have ever considered, instead of relocating the theater from Site Two to Site Three, they have considered relocating the trees and the student campus and the green space further south. And instead of taking away 128 parking spaces, consider how many parking spaces would have to be taken from the visitor lot so that we in the Estancia community can have a theater, we can have trees, and we can have green space. And if because of your lawsuit with the city of Costa Mesa, this board is not in a position to negotiate some type of settlement, I would certainly volunteer to participate in a citizen-led activity to try to remediate the situation so that this community can move forward with theaters and trees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So with that, I'm going to move to item 17. I had the opportunity to speak with Kevin Gordon of Capital Advisors and he is planning on being here further down the year, one more thing is, as you know, in August, there is a recess and that is a potential opportunity for him to come in the future. But the things that we spoke about in particular were the block grants. As you know, for the budget, there were two. They let us know at Capital Advisors how hard they fought for the second block grant, which is called the Arts Music and Instructional Materials Grant. That allows districts and LAAs that did not receive funding in the first block grant to receive funding, to apply to receive funding in that second round, which benefits Newport Mesa for a total of $9.6 million. So that's great. Additionally, home-to-school transportation is an item that is included in the revised budget. It was interesting speaking with Kevin. He said, well, this probably doesn't affect Newport Mesa because so many districts have become walking districts and have stopped offering transportation. As you know, we still offer home-to-school transportation, so we're able to, we are eligible for an additional $2.7 million under this. So that's good for us as well, for our roads. The other item regarding the budget was that he suggested that we discuss working with our labor and other districts like ours because an unfunded universal TK mandate costs us between $15 and $30 million that we have to come up with out of our regular budget that we are not being reimbursed for. There was a lot of advocacy on the part of this board and a part, on the part of Capital Advisors to secure that additional funding, letter writing, meetings, phone calls, those sorts of things, and was ultimately met with a hard no statewide. So other small, community-funded districts like ours are at a disadvantage because we have this mandate to provide education for these students and we are not being compensated for that. Other districts, just other districts that are compensated by students in seats, regular ADA are receiving compensation for those additional regular ADA are receiving compensation for those additional students. We are not. We are paying for that out of our existing budget. And additionally, I had heard early on, and from Capital Advisors as well, that any mandate that is unfunded and has basically no penalty might not be considered a mandate at all, but ultimately, they are still following through with that, as are we. Additionally, there were several bills that were requested, an update from Capital Advisors from our community, and I'm happy to share that information now. SB 866, the minors' vaccine consent would authorize minors 15 years of age or older to consent to vaccines, meeting federal criteria. Currently pending before the full assembly. It's been parked there for over a year, so it's unclear if the Assembly has the political will in election year to take it up. This one we mentioned was passed all the way through the Senate and committees on the Assembly, and it's still stuck on the Assembly floor. Given that it's not moved in many weeks, it suggests that it's likely in trouble. But that said, when it got to the floor, many thought it would indeed head to the governor's desk, and it has not yet happened. If this were not election year, it would probably make it to the governor, but it wouldn't be surprising to see Minor introduce this in the new session, if he's unable to get it done this year. SB 1479, COVID-19 testing in schools and COVID-19 testing plans would require each LEA to create a COVID-19 testing plan that is consistent with guidance from CDPH. It includes a sunset provision of December 31st, 2025. Originally, this would have required LAAs to designate staff to report COVID-19 testing plan info to CDPH, but that requirement was recently amended out. This bill has been heavily opposed by AXA, and a couple of Capital Advisors teams jumped on it, as well as, I'm not sure what those acronyms from him are. So, I'm not going to read them. PAN's willingness to strip out some of the mandates suggests it resulted in AXA, and most of the K-12 groups are moving their opposition. The bill is now pending before Assembly appropriations, which means that it is requiring a plan. It is not specifying the details, because of how costly that would be. AB 1940, School-Based Healthcare Support Program would rename Public School Health Center Support Program to the School-Based Health Center Support Program, and would make several changes to the program to assist in providing and expanding health services to students through school-based health centers. This bill recently passed out of the Senate Education Committee and is pending before the Senate Appropriations Committee. And this is one of two bills dealing with school-based health services. See, I'll read the next one after this. In public discussions and also behind the scenes, there's been an effort by lawmakers and staff to clarify that abortion services are not part of the services being contemplated. That said, reproductive health issues would probably be included among the topics for counseling in education. And then, there's SB 1302, Pupil Health, Pupil Wellness Centers Grant Program. This is the other measure, and it would appropriate a staggering $1 billion from an unspecified fund to provide grants for pupil wellness centers and require the CDE to award annual pupil wellness center grants of up to $250,000 to eligible entities to establish or improve pupil wellness centers that provide comprehensive medical and behavioral health services. Since this expenditure did not show up in the final budget agreement at any amount, it is likely the bill will not move with the funding attached, if at all. The bill is now pending before the Assembly Appropriations Committee. Those are bills that are related. The primary ones that we, as a board, have been working on are the UTK advocacy and funding for that second block grant. And so, it's nice to see that at least we got one of them. And additionally, there was additional funding. I believe Mr. Trader shared a $5 million for facilities, which we are delighted to have, as we have some older buildings. And that is my update. Do I speak too fast sometimes?
No, that's okay. It's a lot, but that's fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And with that, we move to Item 18, Consent Calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Metoyer and seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we move to Discussion Action Calendar. These are Items 19B, so we'll go through 19A, and then I'll call comments for 19B. 19A, Find that moving the Estancia High School Theater Project to Site Three would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Mr. Trader.
So, as you're aware, California Environmental Quality Act requires us to do a study whenever we're doing something that could have an impact on the surrounding environment. So, we've done that, and I'd like to call up Otto Zarensky, our Facilities Director, to address this issue here, just to briefly give you an update on what the findings were of the study.
Good evening, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, Board, and Cabinet, and guests. Thank you. I'm Otto Zarensky, I'm the Director of Facilities for the district, and have been working on this project for quite a few years now. And what we have done and what we're bringing to you tonight is an assessment of the SEQA, or the impact of the project on SEQA. And that really is to look at if there are any significant impacts from the project, or if there are opportunities for categorical exemptions based off of the type of project. And so, we have looked at, similar to Site Two, that has been adopted as categorically exempt, we looked at all five sites, not just Site Three. And so, tonight, what we're bringing forward is just the analysis of that, and we found that of all the sites, all of them would be deemed categorical exempt based off of the program that we have and the potential locations. And tonight, we're bringing forward specifically Item Number Three for your consideration for categorical exemptions.
Thank you. Were there any additional questions? May I have a motion?
I'm just not sure how to say it, but I'll be, go for it. I'll second you.
So moved, 19A, find that moving the Estancia Theater Project to Site Three would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA.
Second, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved by Trustee Wagen and seconded by Trustee Metoyer. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
And now, we move to 19B. Oh, we have, hmm, the comment?
Yeah, I just was looking at the order.
We'll do the comments first.
Okay.
So, we'll do 19B, we'll call public comments. We have six additional comments. So, we have Stephanie Joyce, then Amber Marquin, then Austin Reyes.
Hello. This is my first time being here, so thank you for allowing me to come and comment. I also want to say I really appreciate all the comments from the gallery tonight. It's wonderful to see such collaboration, and the passion is astounding. And even though we may not all agree on all of the points, the fact that we're all able to be up here and share our opinions is incredibly valuable, so thank you for that opportunity. In that vein, I would like to say one of the points that I found disappointing about the Estancia Theater Project was the inability to share the points of view of the Estancia community, of which I am one. I'm a parent of Estancia, and my child is a senior this year, which is astounding, but that's a different topic. But this has been the first opportunity that I've had to be a part of this conversation, even though I've lived in the Estancia Zone for 16 years. I urge you to please take into consideration that while Estancia is largely a silence partner in Newport Mesa, we should not go unnoticed. Our concerns have just as much value as all the other families, students, and community members in Newport Mesa. And our concerns should be addressed as readily, and it doesn't appear, at least to me, that they have been. I also want to say that I fully understand how challenging it must be to sit there and be pointed at and told that you've done all of this wrong. I am not doing that. What I am merely saying is, please consider the opinions of those in the community, those students who are directly affected, those families who deserve to be represented and whose opinions matter just as much as everyone else. And I'm going to end it with a minute and 16 seconds for somebody else to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Marquin, then Austin Reyes, and then Leslie Murtaugh.
Hi, my name is Amber Marquin, and I am Estancia Class of 2017. And I actually just finished my student teaching in the Estancia Drama Program, so needless to say, I love, thank you. I love this program, and I know a lot about it. So, that being said, I believe that Site Number Two is the best option. So, I have three perspectives. I have a perspective as a student, a director, and as a teacher. And we all point to Site Number Two. As a student, I was a senior not that long ago, and seniors truly do not use it as often as they maybe say that they do. And my students have said they do not, and I trust them. And the trees are also diseased. That's not talked about very much. So, they're going to, they're going to need to be taken out anyway. So, this new design includes a new seating area with 40 new non-diseased trees. So, and some students even, I saw a student talking to my master teacher, who's amazing, Pauline Moranian, and he was like, "Yeah, it's a bummer that they're taking out the trees at Estancia. That's where they're going to put the new theater." And she's like, "Well, you didn't realize that they're going to put in 40 new trees, and there is going to be a seating area." He's like, "Really? Oh, well then, yeah, of course, and that's totally a good spot." You know, they just don't know, they don't realize. Next, as a director, the first thing that comes to my mind is a safety issue for it being Site Number Three. We rehearse at night sometimes, and as a director waiting at night, forced parents to pick up their students, it could be kind of scary, you know, waiting outside, and you're far away. And when you're in the parking lot, you're really far away. But if you're in the lot, you're a little more, you're closer in the school, and the custodians are more nearby, and it just feels safer. And there would be no parking for the theater productions or music productions. Next, as a teacher, it would really cut into instructional time. Our classroom is on the opposite side of campus, and a lot of storage space and props and costumes are kept over there, so it would be really a challenge to haul everything back and forth all the time, and same for the music program. You know, dragging all of the really delicate, expensive instruments all the way over to the theater on the opposite side of the school would be really challenging. And so, I saw this quote, and I want to leave you with this, and I think it's very fitting for today. Wisdom is finding the path that is best for all, considering the options, the positives and negatives, and having the courage to change what must be changed for the sake of the world, and in this case, for the sake of the students, because they are going to change the world. Thank you.
So, we have Austin Reyes, then Leslie Murtaugh, and then Vicky Snell.
Hello, Board members. My name is Austin Reyes, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. And I would like to comment on the new location for the Estancia Theater. I would like to help you guys come to a more clear, more pragmatic conclusion, and that's what I'm going to try to communicate here. I'm an Estancia alumni, been there for four years, and I have a diverse experience with many different friend groups at the school. None of them use the senior lawn. And that's not, disregarding the senior lawn, it's just, it's just not used as often as it may be put out. So, I want to suggest Site Two for the new location, because it not only seems like the most pragmatic option, but also the most athletic aesthetically pleasing. The theater in Site Two will plant dozens new trees and create a new lively area where students can spend their time. The latter option, Site Three, in front of the school gym, removes essential parking spaces and unnecessarily adds onto the already delayed timeline. Again, as I previously stated, I'm an Estancia alumni, and I can tell you for a fact, each of those spaces in the front, the main part of the school, are used and needed for students. It's not, it's often that those spaces are needed for students. I had been, I had come to school before, and all of them had been taken. So, every single spot is needed, not only for the students, but also for the community. The football stadium is used for soccer events, football events, other sporting events for the area. People park there and walk over. Also, for all the events that go on in the parks nearby, it's just the most convenient option, and it just seems the most simple as well. And between Site Two and Three, I hope I all finished there. I hope I kind of helped some form of thought process and just kind of to make the conclusion a bit easier for the most pragmatic choice for you guys to decide. I appreciate your time, and I hope my perspective added some value.
Thank you. Next, we have Leslie Murtaugh, and then Vicky Snell.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm kind of short. And thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Leslie Murtaugh. My perspective comes from being an Estancia alumna, parenting an Estancia alumna, and being a retired Newport Mesa teacher, living in Mesa Verde. In opining a location for the new Performing Arts Theater, the question for me is, what's best for the children? Area Three is remote. Putting a theater in this area will increase travel time for students going to and from classes. More travel time means less instructional time for teachers and students. Frequent evening drama rehearsals, coupled with distant parking, add more safety risk. Most students who drive to Estancia drive up the hill and into Area Three. New drivers are able to avoid the dangers of bus congestion and parent drop-offs and pickups that happen in front of the school. Eliminating 125 parking spaces in Area Three will expose young inexperienced drivers to significantly more risk. The Area Three parking lot is the busiest on the campus. It provides easy access to the gym, commons, pool, tennis courts, stadium, trains, Fairview Park, and concerts. It is often crowded after school and on weekends, and is frequently used by the community. Eliminating Area Three parking is problematic. This would put more people in harm's way. Placentia is a notoriously busy and lethal road. The field where the trains are lacks adequate parking, and crossing the street is dangerous. Parking in the Fairview Park entrance is for handicap parking. It's a shame that we can't make Area One work. A theater would add so much beauty and pride to the west side. It's a beautiful driving up Placentia from Mesa Verde. You see the gorgeous park, the golf course, vistas, stadium, and tennis courts, and it's a stark contrast to the south side of the school. Area Two does have lovely trees, a million-dollar breeze, and our beloved senior lawn. The trees are at or near the end of their lifespan, and this area has been budgeted to be aesthetically reimagined. With the commitment of creating equitable green space and knowing this is an imperative respite for an all indoor school, I believe a new senior space would work well along a new state-of-the-art Area Two theater. And wouldn't that be great for kids? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Vicky Snell.
Okay, good evening. I'm here tonight to encourage all of you to vote no on the proposed amended location of the Estancia Theater. Why? It certainly solves the issue of the city of Costa Mesa's continued fight to insert itself into district jurisdiction with accompanying legal fees. But at what cost? City officials and school trustees have very different responsibilities. I don't have to remind you that yours are to put our children's education first. The original site for the Estancia Theater, as studied and reviewed by several groups made up of professionals, parents, and community, was Site Two. It was approved in 2019 with $2 million being spent to conduct necessary testing along with architectural design. This location was the best decision financially, the least disruptive to existing school property, student access, student access, beautification, along with providing a new outdoor student area. I know many of you understand there are always a minority that disagree with specifics to a project, as when CDM and Costa Mesa High School got their new middle school enclaves, theaters, and football fields, resulting in changes to their campuses, and yes, trees being removed. While I appreciate student memories, your responsibility is to current, our current and future students. The bottom line is this has the potential of continued interference by the city based on politics. As we all know, this entire delay has been caused primarily by a few with the power to do so. Sadly, these very trustees and city council members that were elected specifically to represent the interests of the Estancia Zone community, working together to encourage the city to file a lawsuit, which they lost, and an appeal, which they will lose, but will serve the purpose of continued delay, convincing you to give up, compromise with a different location that will cost millions more and remove existing parking. While I believe that a good relationship between the city and the district is essential, that does not include colluding, resulting in the district being held hostage. Please move forward with the original location and begin construction now. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes comments for 19B. So we move to 19B, determine whether or not the Estancia High School Theater Project should be relocated to Site Three, and if the Board of Education makes such determination, adopt Resolution 02-07-22, binding implementation of the Estancia High School Theater Project at Site Three exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approving Site Three as the new site for the Estancia High School Theater Project, and directing staff to file a notice of exemption. Mr. Trader.
Staff has prepared a presentation to help you with this determination that you will make tonight. So Ada Zernsky, our facilities director, will do that.
Thank you.
President Barto, Superintendent Smith, Board, Executive Cabinet, and guests, thank you for being here. So we are going to talk a little bit more about the theater project. We spoke about the Sequa piece, and we can expand on that if needed here. What we'd like to do tonight is talk about what we've done since March of 2022, and we will be looking at the assessment of all of the potential sites. We'll be looking at a comparison of the benefits and challenges of those sites, and talking about estimated schedules and costs. In March of '22, we were asked, staff was asked to provide a community meeting after hearing feedback from the community requesting more information on the project, more information on the potential sites. And so staff had a committee meeting on April 21st and were able to collect additional comments. In addition to that, we had, from the beginning of the design of the project, we had the Estancia Theater Committee, and you've heard some comments about that. That committee was developed of school site staff, including the principals, the teachers, and some community members and parents, along with the facility staff and the project architect. For those meetings, we conducted five meetings during the design phases. So we had two preliminary meetings when we were looking at the programming of the project, and we had three additional follow-up meetings once we entered into the design development of the project and the final site selection of the project. Those meetings were conducted February 15th of '19, March 11th of '19, July 10th of 2019, August 14th of 2019, and November 21st of 2019. In addition to that, we have had meetings with the COC. As you heard tonight, the COC speak about their involvement. We typically shared the same presentations that we shared at the site committee meetings with the COC on those appropriate meeting schedules. And just to note, I counted how many meetings the COC has had since April of 2007 when they became responsible for the Measure F bond dollars, and we've had 38 meetings. So in addition to the site committee, the, we had the community meeting, but we also had emails coming in, we've had phone calls coming in. There's been other ways that we have been receiving comments in addition to the committee meetings and to the public meetings. So there has been a wealth of information shared with not only staff, the board, and anything that has come directly to staff, we've shared with the board, and you have that information now. Specifically to the community meeting, we had an interest in having a different type of meeting. Usually you have me standing up here, presenting to you, we get a few questions, and we say goodnight. So we wanted to have better dialogue with the community, and so we had a short presentation, which included the principals, opening remarks, myself doing a presentation on some of the options. And what specifically we were looking at that night was what of the, which of the other four sites, other than Site Two, would be considered for the alternate site? And we were trying to receive feedback specifically on that issue. And so after we did a short presentation reviewing all of the sites, and we looked at benefits and challenges and potential cost impacts, we placed along the walls exhibits, large format signs, where each person who was in attendance could take a sticky and walk up to the sign, look at the, look at the diagram up close rather than on our screen this far, ask questions, and they were able to put under each column whether they, whether they saw a benefit or a challenge for each of the sites. So they had all five sites available to them. In addition, we had one last board up that they were able to put other questions and comments. So we had in attendance, oh, and I'll just add, so facility staff were there, the architects were there, the principal was there. We stood and walked around the room, talked to students, answered questions, talked to the community members. So it was very engaging, which is great to have people show up to a meeting. I've sat in a lot of empty multipurpose rooms. So that being said, there were a total of 348 comments received, a combination between students and community members. And what we did was, we had students use a yellow sticky versus all the adults or community members used a different color sticky, so we were able to understand exactly whose comments were whose. In attendance, we had 51 students. We had 18 employees, 21 community members, six parents, and one news reporter. And so you all know that that has been recorded and available online, but we did receive all of those comments. We took all of those stickies and we put them into a spreadsheet, which we have provided to you for your consideration, and we have them available if you contact feedback@nmusd. Anyone who's interested in receiving those comments could also receive the same comments that the board received. Next, we have the Sequa process, which we talked about a little bit in the last item. And so really, it was to identify if we were considering an alternate site, what the potential impact would be with Sequa, specifically to environmental impacts, to time to the project, and cost to the project. And so we looked through all of those with our consultant who's here tonight doing mirrors with placeworks, and were able to determine that we found that all of them would have categorical exemptions similar to Site Two. So tonight, we're here to consider an alternate site, and after receiving all of the comments and the feedback, and all of the work that we had done internally and with the committees prior to receiving these comments, it's a, it's a combination of all of that effort. But we really wanted to take into consideration what we found from those community comments. And so what we've done here, which you've seen, you've seen this before, but what we've done now is we've gone back and we've updated it, considering the comments that we received. So you'll see on Site Two, one of the challenges that we've all talked about was loss of green space. We've talked about the benefits of, you know, where it is in the process being DSA-approved. And I'll talk about schedule a little bit more and the impacts of the delays on the next slide. But really, what we wanted to do is represent, comparing Site Two to Three, what does that look like moving forward from here and getting this project started? And so we created these little icons that show you, you know, is there any cost impact? Is there any schedule impact? And is there any parking impact? And so you'll see, since Site Two is as far along as it is, there are minimal. That's not to say that this site versus the other site couldn't still be completed moving Site Three, again, we've updated the benefits and the challenges. We do know that we, if we were to select Site Three, that we would intend on using the design that we currently have for Site Two and trying to preserve that design for Site Three, but we would still need to go through plan approval with DSA and design to, to create construction documents so we could select that site. So you'll see $2 signs there. It's not to weigh it one way or the other, but there's an impact and you need to know about it. The schedule, and I'll say this since it's, it was on the last slide, but you will see between Site Two and Site Three, we are noting that both of those sites would only be able to begin in Quarter Two, 2023. And that is due to, so Site Two is DSA-approved, why can't we proceed? We all know that that is due to the city lawsuit and the pending litigation. And so we have to portray that with knowing that we can't start right away, and so what we've shown that here, and so that's why you don't see more calendar items on this one versus Site Two. Excuse me. Site, excuse me, the parking. You're seeing the parking icons there, and that's because we would have to relocate parking, to make permanent parking underneath the solar structures if we were to elect Site Three. And since the project isn't fully designed, we do have a little caveat there that depending on that final design after it's DSA-approved, we would have to continue to watch our costs. So with all of the sites, we look at all of these different factors as we're considering any project, whether there are multiple sites or single sites. And so from the perspective of traffic flow at, for Site Two and Site Three, they both have some, some traffic flow that would be altered, however, to a level where they both could be mitigated by design. And so we have the banana lot relocation and bus loop relocation with Site Two, and we have parking relocation with Site Three. Safety, so safety's been something that we've talked about, and we continue to consider that. I will tell you that we have created a safety advisory group at the district, and so even though we've considered safety as we've done these projects, we have an additional advisory group now that will help us assess if there are any things that we need to address with projects. Currently, we didn't see any major safety differences between Site Two and Site Three. We would, of course, light parking lots and walkways and create safe ways for students to get to and from either of the areas. Facility, so the facility itself, the facility itself is comprised of the same program. So regardless if it was Site One, Two, Three, Four, or Five, the program is the same program. And so how that is configured within a building may have been different, but we have committed to the same program, so we didn't see any impact there. Program disruption, that one is one that we really needed to consider. So if we're looking at some of the other sites other than Two and Three, we would be displacing the pump station, right, for Site One. And so we would have to have a lot of utilities worked done, and the site could be down for a while, because that's a pretty significant thing. The tennis courts, if we were to select that site, the tennis program would be displaced for, and where would they go, right? Estancia doesn't have that much area. So looking at that, the solar, having to relocate solar and the cost of that, and the loss of classrooms that would have been considered with Site Five, because it did come into the existing building on the backside. So we looked at those as we analyzed the best alternate, and so due to that, Site Three became the least disruptive program-wise. Enhancement, again, I'll just say that the program itself, it's the same program, and we're going to design a, you know, beautiful facility no matter where it goes on campus. So we're gonna have a state-of-the-art theater regardless of where it goes, so that was something that we considered. Aesthetics. So of course, one of the desires was to have the building being on the front side of the school. We've talked about three different locations now, and due to some of the displacement of utilities and location of the future theater, we have presented to you Site Two and Site Three, and Site Three is the alternate. Neighborhood impacts, you know, considering the Joanne Street neighbors, right? And so between Site Two and Site Three, we didn't really see any difference of an impact to those neighbors. We've already addressed Sequa issues based off of the Jim Scott Stadium, and so we know that we could achieve that with Site Two or Site Three. Cost, so cost, and we'll look at cost a little bit more on the next slide. Time delay impact, again, we'll look at that one a little bit more. And then the community feedback we've talked about, and we heard a lot of good information. A lot of it was things that we had discussed or considered. It was just a matter of the emphasis of hearing it directly and having that dialogue. So I think the, receiving, excuse me, water. Receiving the community feedback was was valuable to us. It was, it was great to get in the room, especially with the students. You know, I don't get to hang out with the students very often, so anytime I get to engage with them, I'm very happy about that. So you may be familiar with seeing the bubble diagram on the lower, on the lower part, and really that was an initial look once we started to reevaluate this project moving forward now. And so this was done, I wanna say it was just a few months ago, but when we did this, we were looking at all of the escalation costs, all of the additional costs, and then what it looks like for Site Two and Site Three. And so if you have this, you know, in your hand, you can, you can look at the numbers. And what we're saying here is that this budget is based off of a $30 million project, and looking at what all our traditional costs are. So we have our soft costs, we have our contingencies, we have escalation, and that escalation has been changing, right? So when we got to the point that we needed to look specifically at Site Two and Site Three, we brought in our construction management team, we brought in our estimators, we brought in our architects, and we started at looking at what in addition to what we know now, would it be to proceed with Site Two or Site Three? And so you have the adds for each of those to the overall project cost, and that's summarized on the next sheet. So this is trying to put everything in a nice little one pager for you to understand the costs and the schedules. And so what we've done here is we've taken a different approach at looking at delivery methods. And so our traditional approach is design, get approved by DSA, bid it, hire a contractor, build it. That's typical. And so what we decided to do is work with our construction management firm and say, is there a way that we can get this project? is there a way that we can get this project any faster, more efficient, more cost-effective? And what does that look like? So what you're seeing here are two different schedules for site two and site three. I'll note that on site two, that the reason why we have the schedule up there just noting, so it's very clear, is that the work can't proceed until quarter two of 2023. And again, this is back to the reason for the litigation, pending litigation.
When you talk about quarters, you're talking about a calendar year quarter, not our school district quarters, because my brain goes that way.
Correct.
My thinking of quarter one is in August, September, and it's really not.
January.
Okay. Thank you.
So by doing the two different delivery methods, you have opportunities to enter into contracts sooner. So what we're showing you here is for site two, we have already a DSA-approved set of documents, but we can't proceed until quarter two because we have pending litigation. So it makes it look the same as site three. However, with site three, we still have to redesign the project so that we can have DSA approval done for the new location if that's what we choose to do. The benefit of lease-leaseback is that you could enter into a contract with a general contractor prior to DSA approval, and you can negotiate that contract while you're trying to receive DSA approval, having that time be absorbed with that second effort, and potentially have a demo phase. So typically, we can't start a construction project until we're DSA-approved. However, you can do demolition. As long as you don't start any new construction, you could do demolition. So we could be working with the general contractor under lease-leaseback to be helping us through getting through the designs and to DSA. And that's why we're able to shorten the timeframe from, you can see here, we have 20 months for lease-leaseback and 22 months for a traditional design bid build. So one other thing, when we were developing the schedules originally for the project, we were, because of, well, we started with 18 months because we didn't have the COVID situation yet. Once we learned and understood the impacts of COVID, we extended that construction duration to 24 months, trying to make our project feasible, trying to make it so we could have labor and we could have materials arrive and that we didn't put the contractor in a position where he couldn't complete a job on time. So what we've done now is we've looked, you know, taken another look and seen where we are with the construction industry, looked at this different delivery method, and we're able to shorten the schedules based on each of the delivery methods. So you'll see here with the added costs for site two and site three, the estimated cost for site two is 40.9 million and site three is 41.4 million. So there was one other piece that I wanted to add. I'll go back real quick. As I was talking about the program, so the program, regardless of which site it goes to, does include dressing rooms, scene shop, costume storage, prop storage, black box. So they have all the same elements in them. The one piece that we talked about a little bit, I heard in comments, were the distance from the drama area, and that's true. But with any one of these projects, we intended on finding and relocating the drama classroom itself, and then all of the support spaces would be in the new construction. So that's something we would have to do regardless of location. And I think the last thing was the comments associated with the trees and the condition of the trees. So we have had a arborist look at the trees. We have included in the reports that whether it was sequoia or just any communication that we are monitoring those trees. The maintenance department has a contract that they're constantly monitoring those trees. And, you know, if it became a situation that something needed to be done, then we would be made aware of that. We haven't been told that we have to tear them down by any certain date or that they are significantly worse. We know that they do have a condition, but by no means have we been told that we have to remove them. So last thing to do is let you know all the work that we've done to get here and answer any questions of anything that's lacking here or that you need more information on. We did make a determination, which is why we brought to you site three tonight, to consider as an alternate site. We're ready to move forward. We're ready to answer your questions and move forward on this project and get this theater built for these students.
I have a question from trustee Crane.
Thank you. Amazing. I know how much work you've put, you and your team have put into this. So thank you so much for all your hours and hours of work and due diligence. Two questions just to clarify. When, on slide 10 right there, the second bullet, when it says site three is the most viable of the remaining potential sites, so that's not including site two. It's out of one, three, four, and five.
Correct.
Okay. And then secondly, would you, could you speak to the statement that was made by Ms. Murtaugh regarding the traffic congestion and how it would be redirected to the south signal across from the fire? Because I've been at Estancia during that hour, that bewitching hour around eight-ish, a little before that, and it is pretty crazy because there's pedestrian, there's a lot of walkers, but there's also a lot of traffic. How would not having that parking lot affect that traffic light and the congestion and safety of the students and drivers?
So we have, we've looked at just the shift in traffic. We know that we have a number of pedestrians, walkers, and then bikes crossing. We are currently looking at, and we had started a design and we went out to bid to do the pavement back by the solar structures. So what we did was in anticipation of the project and potentially relocating the bus loop and bus drop-off, we looked at how we could provide a safer way for people coming whether from the north or the south to get onto campus and across the parking lot onto campus. And so for pedestrian traffic, we already have a plan to get them safer onto the campus. For vehicular, we haven't resolved that quite yet. We're just talking about how that would, how the parking would shift. And so we would work with the city on the signalization, right? So we've worked on other projects, I've worked on other projects with this district and outside of this district where we've changed the way a signal works. And so we would just work with the city on looking at how that traffic is coming, how it needs to be managed for students and vehicles coming in and out, and then also the additional time the other signal may need to be green. So we would work with them on just making those adjustments, but we're just not that far yet.
Trustee Wiegand. Can you talk a little bit more about the displacement of the parking in site three and your proposal for where that's going to go for site three?
Let's see. I don't have a good area. Oh, there we go. So where you see site three, that's just showing the entire parking lot. That doesn't mean that the theater is going to consume the entire parking lot. So what we did was we looked at how many parking stalls are out there now and how could we create permanent parking for those elsewhere? And so what we've talked about is there's 136 stalls there currently. So we've looked at how many stalls could be accommodated underneath the solar lot. And so there are a few elements of that that we would, so we know that we can create in excess of 150 stalls underneath the solar lot. So we could satisfy our daily needs to meet the relocation of the parking stalls. And then we had been talking about, so you would still enter, to get to the solar lots, you would still enter the south signal closest to the solar area. So you can make a right turn in, it's signalized. You can make a left turn in, it's signalized. We also, with that design I was talking to you about, along the edge of the building itself on the south side, we know that special ed students, their classrooms are closest over there. And so we're creating a zone there where the buses can pull up, where they have ADA appropriate access there that they can get them directly into their classrooms rather than dropping them off at the front of the school where they had to either go all around the building or all the way through the building. So that'll help create that flow through there. And the intent would be that staff would park under the solar parking and students would park outside of that. And the other improvements that are not tremendous, but we would still have to provide ADA stalls underneath the solar lot. And we would make improvements of the fencing that runs along the ball fields and the pavement. There's a four-foot fence there now with openings every so often. And so if we were to improve this area to be permanent parking, ADA, we would raise that fence, we put a curb so that it was appropriate, so that cars couldn't just, you know, drive into the, into the ball fields. I'll just say this area is used for parking on occasion, so I haven't heard of anything, you know, bad happening out there. I do know that there are lights underneath all of the solar structures. There are lights that take you from basically the solar structure all the way to the walkway to the gymnas, or excuse me, Jim Scott Stadium. So not to say that a few of those lights couldn't be enhanced, but there is a pathway there that I think would be suitable for parking.
And is that parking, are all those athletic fields there, the pool, the Jim Scott Stadium, the baseball fields and those tennis courts easily accessible by that new parking that would be created under those solar?
Yes. Yeah. It's, I mean, the only thing we would do was, would be create a barrier so cars couldn't drive through there. We would have to have fire lane. We know where the fire lane is. We've worked with the fire department specifically on the project I was just talking about for the fire lane and where that would go in relation to that paved area. So it's already set to be fire lane efficient and paved section for vehicular traffic.
And what is that area used for today?
During the day, nothing. There's a few storage containers underneath there, and then primarily it's used after hours for athletics and for games in the stadium.
Thank you. Trustee Yelsey and then trustee Crane.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just have more comments. I think we've had questions for so many years on this, I think we should now know pretty much everything that's going on over there. I first want to thank you, Ada, for everything you've put into this. I used to think, and I still think it's the case, that the CDM Athletic Complex was the longest-standing project we had. I think we're getting close to equaling that with this. So I appreciate all the work you've done as, I mean, I'm not sure exactly when we started talking about it in terms of having the bond money finally to put into this, but I do, and I also want to say I thank everyone for their comments who are here tonight, who have been to every single meeting that they've talked about this, who gave us comments at the forums, comments at forums that you held over two years ago. I want to thank everybody for that. And especially I just want to thank Vicky Snell, who made a comment tonight. And there is no one in this room, including any board member up here, who has been more passionate or put more time and effort to this day in getting this theater built. So I do want to thank her for all the work she put into this. As you said, we approved this as a board in December of 2020, and there were four current board members who were on that, and we approved it 7-0. We do have new board members and new boards, I found out, can always change things that have been, that have been done. So it was approved in December. In January of 2021, the city of Costa Mesa, and I'm glad you mentioned that as well because some people are not aware of it, they don't know why we were so delayed, filed a lawsuit, and that prohibited from us from moving any further. A superior court judge came back and ruled in favor of the district. Even with that, the city is appealing that. So the city of Costa Mesa is spending, I'm sure, I don't know what their costs are, I'm sure it's hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to file this lawsuit and appeal this lawsuit against us. I know we are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars defending it, and this is all taxpayer dollars. So I personally think that's physically irresponsible and I blame the city for holding this up. But now we have, we've already approved site two, we know that's, we've approved that. We're here tonight to look at would site three be a better site? And we've looked at the advantages and disadvantages, or the positives and negatives of both of them. We've listened to many members of the community here, every place, calling us, writing us. And there's always going to be people on each side of an issue. We know that with anything we discuss, there's going to be people who feel a certain way, and they feel like their way, everybody agrees with them. And that's not the case. It's, we see that all the time. So, you know, we're always going to have those different opinions. But given all that, and I was, when we found out about a year ago, maybe not quite a year ago, that there was some information that we had not had when we made the original decision for site two, I was willing to say, okay, let's listen to that, let's look at all that. So we have all that new information, and I feel like I've been very open and fair of like, okay, I'm going to listen to everything to see what we're doing. But when it comes down to it now and I look at everything that you've presented and everything we've been through, I personally feel that site two is still the way to go. If that's where, that's where the, we should break ground. I look at, we've wanted to put a theater at all our four high schools, so this would be the final one. We have Loth's Auditorium at Newport Harbor, it was already existing, we redid it, it's magnificent, it's a showpiece. At Costa Mesa and Corona Del Mar, they were going to be new sites, nonexisting. Costa Mesa, it was decided it should be a front on Fairview and Arlington to be a focal point of the school, and it definitely is. It sits majestically there. The city of the arts should be proud of having that on there. At Corona Del Mar, the campus is surrounded by a quad, that's kind of the central part of the campus. And so it was decided there to put it at the end of the quad. So when you enter the campus and first walk through, you see it physically in the back. It's beautiful. It's standing up there very tall, and everybody's happy with that. At Estancia, to me, having this theater as a front of the school, to be front and center prominent, is also very majestic. It would be a showstopper on the street, or maybe a showstarter, I don't know, but it would be, it would be definitely out there and kind of bring the entire school campus together. So aesthetically for me, that's one of the reasons. I think having it over toward the, in the back toward, in the parking lot, it's over with the tennis courts and Jim Scott Stadium, and it's kind of all alone. And I think someone also brought up the safety feature that there's a lot of performances and a lot of activity that goes on at night, and it really isn't connected to the main part of school. So for all those reasons and more, I, you know, I just think, to me, it just, all this process just clarified that I think it should stay with site two.
Thank you. And then trustee Metoy.
Well, thanks for saying half of what I was going to say, but that's okay. I just want to assure the public that while tonight we had a lot of our speakers, all of our speakers, were pro-site two and we're glad to hear that, we have had other nights where all the speakers were, oh my gosh, don't put it at site two. And then I have heard others, when I first heard we were putting on a theater, I, oh my gosh, and I pictured the campus, I knew right where it should go because of course I know everything construction and I know everything that should be happening. So I said, So I said, oh, I know exactly where it should go, and that would have been site one. And then we learned, because we are educators, we learned, oh, my gosh, there is a pumping station. And that means school would have to be shut down for part of it because it's, the school is built lower in ground than the sanitation pump is, than the sewer is. So they have to pump up to, and I, you can imagine how that would work in a high school. And then the neighbors are right next door. And I don't know how anybody else would feel, but if I had a house and all of a sudden a three-story blank wall was put up right in my backyard, I cannot, that would have taken some a little more effort and things like that. There were things that made me go, oh, fine, okay, fine. But we did. We heard new things and we did listen to them. And we have weighed every single site. We did listen to everybody. We, any email that gets to the board is read by the entire board. And we talk about it. And I don't want the public to think that we just listen to the next best, last, loudest voice because that's not what we do. We analyze, we discuss, we read, and we discuss, and then we look at each other and we discuss. And so I I I have my opinion and I know exactly how I'm going to vote. I've been very clear to my neighbors and everybody how I'm good, how I vote. I think that our site and everyone did an excellent job at the beginning. I thought it was nuts where they wanted it and realized later it's the best spot for the for the school. It will change the whole appearance of going into Estancia. And we have to be responsible to make sure that that green space is relocated because the kids deserve that too. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Trustee Crane.
Yeah, I have a couple more clarification questions. One has to do with safety. How many of our campuses actually have a traffic light right there next to campus? I know CDM doesn't, Harbor doesn't.
Mesa does.
Mesa does, kind of by OCC.
Arlington.
Okay, and is that connected to student student parking or is it staff parking? You know, that front edge right there, OCC, right where you cross.
I know, so right at um, right, right at the very entry by admin.
Yeah, okay, so is that, is that a stu-, is that a student lot or is that a?
I'm not sure. I know where the students park.
Students parked by the gym. So there is no signal for the kids.
Okay.
So it's, it would be the, at first, uh in a sense, like as far as congesting traffic, redirecting traffic to that light. Okay, and then secondly, would you mind highlighting uh the green space for site three and for site two for the public so we can kind of maybe have an idea of what we're getting? Because I know that green space is a definite interest for our community and students.
I took all of the renderings down. Um so.
Or you can just tell us, because I know you're an expert.
Yeah, well, the building itself is going to, um it's for site, here, let's go back. Start here. For site two, so the top piece of that somewhat triangle, polygon, where it says two, that's primarily where the theater is going to go. And everything in between that area and the smaller triangle that aligns to the front of the school gets renovated. And we we've shown you renderings of that. That design was obviously further along, being DSA approved. We can show you pretty pictures of that. Um and the idea was to create a circular courtyard with um walkways and ramps and uh landscape trees and raised areas so that you could have kind of a a bowl kind of feel where students could be sitting there. You could even have someone presenting from the center of that area, having meetings out there, having small performances out there. So the one thing that we did look at is, as we realized the the need for green space was even modifying some of that concrete as it is designed today. And you could do, whether it's natural turf or artificial turf, rather than having of all the tops of each of those areas be concrete, we can make it a a more lush space and add additional trees. For the site three, since we don't have the building plotted yet and we don't have the design finalized, it's just something we know that we have to do as part of the project. And I'm not sure if we talked about it or not, but the uh what we're calling the student gathering area. So when we were considering site two, we said that we were going to be removing this space for use of students and that we were going to enhance what was the old pool and create a student gathering area. And so we've been in design on that. We've been looking at what that space needs to look like. I will be bringing to you in August a conceptual plan that is bringing a lot of landscape elements into that area. So we know that that area is stark. We're looking at planter walls. We're looking at trees in there, shade structures in there. So that was also intended to offset a student gathering area for the student. So there are other things that we're we're continuing to do regardless of which location the the theater ends up in.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Ara. So um I've done a lot of work. In fact, some, I I've spoken to students, community members. We've had a ton of staff input, data, schemas, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, I always go back to this, um our board bylaws, BB ninety-two hundred that state, "Board members shall hold the education of students above any partisan principle, group interest, or personal interest." We're here for kids. And we're here to be responsible thinkers that analyze all the angles. And I have appreciated all of the input. And me being one of the new board members, um it was a learning experience. It was we, and we kind of came in with, I mean, I came in with kind of a blank slate. And it's sort of like we're, for site two, we're shovel-ready but frozen in time. Right? Shovel-ready but frozen. All right? And I'm not convinced, from everything I've heard today and have researched, that site three is glitch-free in cost and time overrun. You know, slide six, you know, has an asterisk at the bottom right. "Projected estimates subject to change. Estimate for project redesign." I would be irresponsible to approve something tonight that has asterisks. Period. So you know how I feel about this.
I'm, I'm gonna, unless anyone else would come and call for their question.
It's interesting because that's actually how we got here, in my opinion. There wasn't a lot of information despite asking. So when I'm, when I um joined the board in two thousand eighteen, I, it was, it was great to hear where those those dates for the committee because those were dates that I asked about at the time. I didn't know that they were happening. So as a board member, I didn't know that they were happening. It's unfortunate that there were only two community members that attended the committee. I think that's not necessarily what community input looks like or community engagement. Estancia, based on some prior experiences that happened there, are the ones that put together, was the reason the board went with Board Policy eleven hundred, which is communication with the public about any building or structures. And while, yes, there were um some flyers that went out, it was after this project had already been submitted to DSA. That, to me, is extremely disingenuous. We didn't follow our own board policy in this case. And I think, for me, I'm the only person on this board who went to Estancia. I lived in the neighborhood. I still live in the neighborhood. I had Mrs. Van Holt. She was my favorite teacher at Estancia. And I think it's really unfortunate that um decisions were made that Estancia was last. I don't think that has anything to do with this board that's currently in place. Um I think that was a poor decision in two thousand four, two thousand seven. Those were decisions that, um I think, as Stephanie spoke, there's, there's often a perception that Estancia is last, that we are, there's a silent voice, there's, we're not heard. Um I think that's especially egregious to me, why the community input was not done properly. I I just, I have a lot of problems with the way that that was done. I think it's unfortunate a variety of the people that I have spoken with. Um and I initially thought site one was the best. It makes a lot of sense. I was raised on Daryl, which, Daryl and Joanne, I was raised right there. A lot of the people that I've spoken with would have loved site one. I would have loved site one. But unfortunately, we weren't told um that that was an option. I understand the committee wasn't told that any other site except, except site two was an option. And I think there's, yes, there's a lot of mitigating circumstances with site one not being available. Sharing a light with a fire station is never a good idea. But I also feel that this can be a win-win. We don't have to have a theater and not have the senior lawn. I also think it's a bit disingenuous when people say the senior lawn is not used. I drive by it about five times a day. There are always people on the senior lawn. Particularly during COVID, it was used every single day. But I'm there on the weekends and there are people in that space. I, I, for me, I'm a little concerned that um the information that was not given despite asking for it for two years kind of got us to where we are, and that employee is not with us any longer. But um this process was not necessarily done properly. To submit something to DSA before you have a community meeting, which goes against our board policy, to me, was wrong. I would like to see um site three chosen. One of the things for me, I know that the drama area in and of itself, it's always been too small. It's always been too removed. There's, there's been prob-, I mean, I went to school there in the nineties. It's, it's been an existing problem. Um and so to have the opportunity to have the classrooms moved where the theater is, I think for both locations is a win-win. And we know there are a lot less students that are driving to school than twenty years ago. Where at the parking lot, uh both of the parking lots were much more full. So for me, as somebody who actually attended Estancia, who I've met with so many students in the neighborhood, who have told me beyond just our small group of drama students, which I, they are important, but the variety of the other students, A, didn't hear about this happening. They heard about it after the fact. They were disappointed they weren't included in the decision-making. And when asked, "Do you want to keep the green space or would you rather have something in a parking lot?" Every single one of them has said, that I've spoken to, has said, "The parking lot." The parking lot, to me, makes much more sense. So I I disagree with what um some of the folks up here have said. That's not a surprise to them. I have shared that in the past. But um I think even more so for me, the information that I've received, finally, thank you to our new superintendent. I shouldn't have to do a public records request as a board member to get information. So I thank our superintendent for um giving us information that actually is accurate and timely. I think doing site three actually makes this project finish sooner than site two, which to me, the 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 availability for our drama students to use the space as soon as possible is key. I would love, I would, I would love them to be in there immediately. So um the availability of getting in there as fast as possible, to me, is really important. Unfortunately, we had COVID that happened and it changed a lot of plans. There are a lot of weird things that happened on this project. I think we need to stop all the finger pointing. And for me, I would like to have a win-win where we choose option three um and we build where there's literally a parking lot and nothing else there. I've never heard in my life, oh, well, this is my side of the school, this is where I drive, and this is the, that's not, as a student at Estancia, you don't view a parking lot as from one neighborhood or another. To me, that, that doesn't make sense. I think there's some landscape that can be done on both sides. So I I feel really strongly that site three, again, doesn't displace anything. We can continue to have both. Um and I've loved the design that you came forward with, with if we do site three, we can not only have the senior lawn, but then also have um a sunken-in amphitheater that has some green space. We could actually have two green spaces. So I just feel it's, it's not that much more money at all. We've already waited this whole time. We're using the same design plan. We're literally just moving it over. So I thank you so much for doing all this work. You, you've done so much with all of this, so thank you. I feel really strongly, though, that site three is the most viable option. Thank you.
Trustee or Soylu, but then first superintendent Smith wanted to add some comments.
Not, not a comment, just a clarification, because our, our task is just to be accurate. That's, that's it, to provide accurate information as requested by the board and community. When we talk about asterisks, though, I think you had said in other meetings that both sites have the ability to have overruns, extensions of time, that site two is not a guarantee that finishes on time with no additional cost. I just want to be clear that i- if that's equal for both, then that should be clarified.
So, of course, right? We know that we have cha-challenges with um materials labor to some degree, just dependent on a contractor's availability. So when we look at pre-qualifying a contractor, we may want to get, you know, a group of six contractors. And because they're busy doing hundred-million-dollar projects, they don't bid on our projects. And so by not having necessarily the same group or a large group of general contractors, there are little things like that that could impact um any, any version of this project. So the, the, it's, it's construction. Changes happen, unforeseen conditions happen. I think just to, to be clear, the only reason why it wasn't put on the other was just because of the DSA approval. But that's not to say beyond DSA approval that the same circumstances couldn't happen to a degree.
Thank you. Thank you, Ara, for all of your work. It's really, it's just been so fascinating to see all the stuff that you guys do and and the speed with which you've been doing it and and the intensity of the work. So I really do appreciate it. So for me, I think it's just a, a decision of, um, you know, math. The math on this isn't much different to move to site three than it is to stay at site two, yet you get to keep the front green space that, I know some of you have said you don't see kids there. I drive by there at least twice a day, especially lunch and the morning snack time. There's kids out there all day, all the time, especially during CMAC when my daughter's at SWIN there. It is a heavily-used front lawn. And the trees are not dying. Thank you for clarifying that, Ara. So I think that some of these urban legends, that the trees are dying anyway, no one uses it, it's just not rooted in reality. The reality is, it's a green space that many kids use. And we can keep that and keep a beautiful theater, keep both things for a couple extra months and a, you know, negligible amount extra of dollars. And thank you for addressing the asterisks. Because, yes, as, as Dr. Smith said, all construction projects are subject to change. So having the asterisks on the page three and not on the page two, it's, the reality is, they're all asterisked. So, so that, that to me is just, it's really about, you know, honoring all the work that folks have done on this for so many years. No one wanted COVID to happen. It happened. And no one wanted Estancia to be last. I don't think it was some, you know, grand plan back in two thousand four or six that they put Estancia last on the list, but they did. And that budded it up to a pandemic, which just extended it again. So just put us in this, you know, bizarre time lag to, I think, Carol's point, trustee Crane's point about, you know, zone, um, site two is, it's kind of just stuck in the past. It's stuck pre-pandemic. Now, what is the saying? You know better, you do better. I feel like everyone up here now knows better. Let's just do better. Because as others have said, it's, it's all about the kids and it's all about all kids. So it's great to hear from the theater kids and and people who have been through the theater program. I really appreciate that. And that's wonderful. And and my daughter's going to Broadway Camp in New York this summer. We love theater too. But the reality is, I think I'm the only one up here who has a kid who's going to go to Estancia in a handful of years. And in a handful of years, I know, and she's done, she's been climbing the trees in the front. She doesn't want to go there. And if you ask her, she's very vocal. She just thinks it's ridiculous to remove that area. She's like, can't you just put the theater next to it, Mama? And I was like, you know what? They probably could if they wanted to. So um I would love all kids to have access to the skateboarding area that they currently have, the tree shade that they currently have and hang out under, and a beautiful theater. And up here, we have the power to do that. So I'm hoping that my, my fellow members, at least a couple more, understand that, that it's in our hands and it's about, do you want the view, the vision of the past or do you want the vision of the future? Because in the future, we can have two nice things at Estancia, and it would be really wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee Wigan.
So um I kind of have the unique experience of being very neutral on this. You know, I, I don't live in the, in the, in that area, don't kids that go there. Wasn't on the board at the time when this decision was made. So I'm kind of, as I look at this project, I see it as, okay, what do, what do I think that I actually like on site two and site three, knowing all of the contin-, the, the circumstances that got us to these two things? But I'm not sure if that is really how I'm going to judge my decision on this. I think I'm going to decide based on where I think I, I think would be best for Estancia and where I think at Estancia, um as we develop this whole master plan for our community and our schools, where I think that that best location can be. And keeping in mind that there was probably three different initial intents of the theater. It was to create a new front identity for Astancia and enhance that curb appeal, a modern theater, just like the other three, Newport Mesa. And then, you know, keep that integrity of Astancia, you know, have that green space, have these kids have places to go, and also make sure that we have overflow parking for the events that are held at Astancia. You know, yesterday, I was doing my due diligence, driving up, driving through, and luckily, all those parking lots were open, where, you know, under the solar panels, by the pool, by everything. And so I can, you know, drive around, see what it would be like, and test out the different sites and different ramifications of our decisions. So, you know, it does, you know, obviously, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, it's a bummer that we have an issue with litigation on this, that, you know, it's something that's, you know, in our jurisdiction, I believe, and it doesn't feel that good that, you know, that's happening. But with that, you know, I'm able to look at where I think would probably be the best location. And, you know, with all due respect to the former board, I don't mean to, I understand that, you know, we don't want to go against some of these decisions, but sometimes when you look at a decision and think, hmm, you know, I might have thought of that differently, and that's, you know, why we are on the board and things get looked at a different way. So, you know, with that, I also pulled up the summary of the bond from the ballot, when it was on the ballot, and wanted to see if maybe that would bring me to some consensus on my decision. The summary said, "This ballot measure, Measure F, would provide $282 million for school construction by taxing property owners in Newport Beach and Costa Mesa up to $21.60 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. Proposed projects include new science rooms at elementary schools, performing arts center for four high school schools, and a teacher training center. The district would also demolish and replace condemned buildings at Newport Harbor High School, build a football stadium at Astancia High, and construct a 50-meter Olympic-sized pool at Costa Mesa High School." So when I look at all those, I think, okay, yeah, that really didn't help me either. But I'm glad I read it. And now you have to. So with that, I just want to say thank you for all the decisions that are, all the work that you and your team have put together. And I really respect everyone on this board for speaking their mind and saying what they feel. So, thank you.
So I'm going to make one short comment, and then I'll call for the question, just that I really appreciate all your hard work, and this has been a long process, and it's been four years that we've been working on this. But I do appreciate getting the updated information, all the information and all the hard work that went into that. And I also see that, it is my opinion that we are delayed because of asterisks that happened two years ago. And I would hate, the looming asterisk that is there is the pending litigation. So for me, moving forward expediently is my choice so that we can actually get the theater that the kids deserve. So I'm going to call for the question. May I have a motion?
I would like to make the motion to adopt Resolution 020722, to implement the Astancia High School Theater at Site Three as exempt from SEQA and approve Site Three as the new site for the Astancia High School Theater project, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Ursoilu. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
No.
Trustee Crane?
No.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
No.
Thank you. Okay. So now we move to Item 20, Resolution Adoption Calendar. 20A, Adopt Resolution 01-07-22, Finding the Site Improvement Project at Harper Assessment Center Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and Approving the filing and recordation of a Notice of Exemption. So moved. Okay. You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Metoyer. Any comments or questions? Okay. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
20B, Adopt Resolution 03-07-22, Approving Members and the Delegation of Certain Authority for the Benita Canyon Public Facilities Financing Authority. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Metoyer, seconded by Trustee Anderson. Any questions? Okay. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Superintendent's informal report.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just wanted to comment on the hard work of the trustees to prioritize expanded learning opportunities and our staff putting together what is an extremely robust summer program for our students. We're seeing students work on core academics as well as enrichment and STEM and the arts. Ironically, every one of the elementary schools has its own musical. They're doing dance, they're doing sports. It is amazing to see. And we have two different sections, and most of our students are saying the entire day. They want to be there. As I said to the trustees, I'll say this for public record, when I asked a bunch of students, "What's your favorite part of the day, the academic or the enrichment?", they said, "All day." That doesn't happen all the time. So that was impressive. Also, we're feeding students. We're feeding students that otherwise in our community wouldn't have access to those resources. We're doing it every day multiple times. And I just want to, again, thank you for your prioritizing this. I want to thank the staff and the audience and those who are home watching for showing up every day to be a part of this. And to our community allies, we couldn't do this robust program without community partnerships. At every site, there are allies helping us do the work, and our students are benefiting. Almost 2,000 students in elementary, over 1,000 in secondary. Most, or at least, I think it's 50% of the districts in California aren't that large. So our summer school program is exceeding the size of many school districts. So thank you, and thank all of you for supporting us.
Thank you. Board member reports, committee reports. I gave my committee report in my informational item. Trustee Yelsey?
No report.
Trustee Wigan?
No report.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Nothing.
Trustee Anderson?
No report.
Trustee Crane?
So Trustee Metoyer and I, we went and visited some of our summer schools today. And what a joy. That's what it's all about. We went to, we met Lori Hogard, who is the, what? Director? Director of Summer Learning. Designer. She's the designer. And we started at Wilson and then went over to Kaiser and then ended at? Kelly Brook. And it was absolutely amazing, the scope and the depth of our programs. And I don't know how it was pulled off logistically. I mean, we're talking transportation, nutritional services. We went to ESI, ESY site at Kaiser. Amazing. The, just the whole feel of being there was just amazing, and the learning that was going on, incredible. So you could probably say more, but I just wanted to just thank everyone who was involved in making this happen. It was amazing. It's amazing. I can always say more, but I won't say a lot. You said it well. It's, last year, we did it because, oh my gosh, we have to get this done. And we did a really good job. I didn't see how it could possibly get better. But, oh my gosh, with the collaboration with so many community partners, and what's really cool, Trustee Anderson will appreciate this part, too. We have now formed bonds and relationships, and we're kind of vetting our community arts partners, because we know that, we know who we could use to help supplement programs and foster more education. I can't tell you how excited kids were trying to explain to me how the bots worked and how they could put them down. That was the coolest. Wasn't that so neat? And all of a sudden, they started spinning around, and I go, "Well, who told them to do that?" Oh, my gosh. It was so exciting. And being in the ESY class, who, rising first graders, which is what we call kids who were in kindergarten last year but are going into first grade next year, so they're like, "Nothing yet?" So they're rising first graders. They were very distracted when we came in to watch them. But our special ed kids in our ESY program, they just like, "Oh, adults are here." And they just moved on and kept doing their work, and they were so happy to show us what they've done. Kids love to learn when learning is not beaten into them, and they, I didn't see...
We don't beat kids.
No, we don't. Sorry. I'm doing flashbacks to my education. Back in the day when I grew up, you sat like this and you just absorbed what you could and what you didn't showed up on a test. Now, this is how kids learn. It's just, it makes you so proud, so proud. And one of my questions was, "How did you get teachers to come back? They're exhausted." How did you guys come back? We have interns that are serving as site leaders, and there's a tag team process where, and as anybody who's in education ever knows, if you're there, you're supposed to be there for 10 minutes, you're there for an hour and 10 minutes. So they overlap, but they work together. The collaboration is spectacular. And we were at Wilson, and I said, "Well, this is practice. This is like a full school." And they said, "Nope, this is more than a full school." So anyway, it was exciting, and I'm just glad we had the opportunity to do that.
I asked President Barto if I could comment on that, because you said something I don't have a frame of reference for. You said it was better this year. I'm not weighing in on that because it's self-serving. But you remember, I told all of you that I watched with my wife the board meeting, because I wanted this job, so we started to do our homework. And Lori was presenting on summer school. My wife looked at me and said, "None of your districts had summer schools that good, right? So, honey, if you're watching, my district has a great summer school."
Well, and then, Dr. Smith, to build on that, I did ask Dr. Hogard if this particular summer school model was anywhere around in the county. She goes, "There are definitely summer schools being offered, but not to this extent and depth." So we're the gold standard, just so you know.
We will adjourn the meeting with that at 8:22 PM. Thank you very much.